Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting for the City of Casa Grande. And welcome to everybody. Let's call this meeting to order. It's at seven o'clock. The first order of business tonight is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. So please remain standing for both. Please join me.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight as we celebrate this season. We'd love to see all of our community here. And we ask that you bless our entire community, those that are here, those that could make it tonight, and just help everyone have the best season that they can. We also ask, Lord, that you watch over our first responders here and all over the world, especially our police and fire. Guide us tonight as a council, as a community, to make the best decisions we can that serve the best interests of all the people. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please throw me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like all the young voices. That sounds good. And you guys are so cute. Can you? Can I take a couple home with me? No? Well, I can have them?
No return.
No return policy? All right. Let the roll call show. There are five of us here. We have two missing. Do we have excuses for the two missing?
Mayor McFarland, I move to excuse Councilman Edwards and Councilwoman Fitzgibbons from the meeting this evening.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, please mark them excused. Gloria?
So noted.
Next, we have our minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the city council's special meeting minutes from December 5th and the city council regular meeting minutes from December 5th.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved as presented. List of claims. Item D.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated November 30th through December 13th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Claims are approved. Item D is approved. So item E is our meeting agenda tonight. Larry, any changes?
We have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody on council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Agenda is approved for this evening. Next, we have our special presentations. This is the presentation of the 2022 Electric Light Parade. And anybody who was in that parade and actually walked in the parade should get a prize. So those of you that aren't getting a prize, I apologize. But next year, if this happens again, we'll have to find a prize for everybody, Larry. So I'm going to come down front, and Danny, you're going to help me hand out these prizes. Our director of community services.
Yes, as the mayor mentioned, I'm really proud of everybody that participated that day. I'm really proud of the people that didn't come even. They practiced, they planned to come, but it just didn't work out for them. So again, really happy. It's been a long time. It's 28 years that we've done this. It's really brought families and organizations together. On that day, it really brought people under those tents together, if you noticed with blankets and things. So we're going to go ahead and announce the winners. So I'll turn this over to the mayor, and he has the list right here.
You have the awards?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to talk into this because we have people online, so it's easier for them to hear when we actually use the microphone. So first of all, I just wanted to say again, thank you to everybody who participated. This is one of our biggest and brightest, pardon the pun, events of the year. And it's so exciting to see everybody who participates in it. And there were some amazing participants. One of the groups right here, which I think, well, I won't relay that, their prize yet, but they probably know what they got anyway. But, all right, so let's go with the best public safety. That's the Casa Grande Fire Department. At least Eloy didn't win this year. I said, at least Eloy didn't win this year. Wait, we need a picture, Dave. Good. All right, next. The most festive, APS. I thought I saw somebody from APS here. And also our sponsor. So thank you to APS. Big shout out. All right, the biggest and brightest, Abbott Nutrition. Anybody here from Abbott? Yes. All right. Thank you. Congratulations again. Most creative costumes, the Girl Scouts Service Unit 623. All right, that's cool. Come on up. Here.
One of the groups.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Good job, good job. Good job. Can we get everybody in this picture? Danny, come on. Can you get it off? All right, congratulations. All right, most original. And they've been up here before, too. Mission Royale Adult Community. Congratulations. You guys might as well just stay up here. Hey, Mission Royale, you guys might as well just stay up here. And Richard, you want to announce this one?
It's your award.
The APS Power to Make It Happen Award is also awarded to Mission Royale. Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. Taking all the hard work home. All right, and then the 2022 People's Choice Award, the Diamond Dolls. And so we might as well throw both awards in here. You also got the mayor's award. So congratulations, they got two awards. I told you, you're so darn cute. Come on over here, guys. Come on over here. You should hold that one. So the People's Choice and the mayor's award. So the mayor obviously knew what the people liked. Thank you, Donna.
See, I knew what to wear.
Oh, one more. Girls say cheese.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. All right. Congratulations to all the winners and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, and they were wet, dude. I think you should have put on one of those capes.
If you guys don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to leave, so. Thanks, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas.
So I thought, do the second place and the third place get something? They should get certificates. I know that's what I thought.
Oh, I think you're right.
Make the screen come down and everything.
But they were listed in the paper.
Got a lot of power there.
I thought we did have second place. I thought we had given certificates before.
Oh, yeah.
Matt's worried about getting out of here at nine o'clock tonight.
Okay. All right, special. Now we're into consent agenda items, so all items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be a separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Does anybody have anything you want to remove from the consent agenda? Anybody from the public? Staff? Anybody? Okay. All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, first item is on, and the next item is item I. This is our award of contracts.
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. I blew right by public comments. So item H, actually, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. If there's someone who so desires to speak to the council, now is your opportunity. This is, I'll open the floor for comments. If you do want to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes and understand that it's not on the agenda, and therefore, we cannot comment on it. But after all comments are done, we will direct staff to follow up. And we need your name and your address, please. So if there's anybody here like to speak, please step forward. Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to close the floor and we'll move to item I, which is I-1, Considering Approval Resolution Number 5497. Okay?
This item is seeking mayor and council's approval to enter into a software-as-a-service SaaS agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., to procure enterprise resource planning ERP software functionality and implementation services utilizing Sourcewell Contract Mayor and council will recall that one of the questions posed to applicants for the finance director position almost three years ago surrounded the city's need to successfully select, procure, and deploy a new ERP financial management software. Well, we made it through the selection stage, and now we are in the procurement stage of this endeavor. Today marks almost 14 months of research, meetings, calls to other municipalities within the state, and several demonstrations from the software vendor leading to this recommendation to mayor and council. These activities were facilitated by Ms. Jamie Barr, who is the city's Business Applications Analyst, and I have invited her to sit with me this evening to field questions that the mayor and council may have that I may not be able to answer based on her active role in this endeavor. A recommendation, leading to a recommendation to mayor and council, a recommendation to enter into a SaaS agreement with Tyler Technologies. SaaS means software-as-a-service consisting of system administration, system management, and system monitoring activities that Tyler Technologies performs for the software and includes the right to access and use the software, receive maintenance and support on the software, including downtime resolution under the terms of the service level agreement, and data storage and archiving. With this action, the city is seeking to replace its 2008 Enterprise Resource Planning Software, more commonly known as Harris Enterprise. This action will include all costs related to implementation, example configuration, data conversion and migration, interface development, testing, training, documentation, and Tyler's staff travel expense to assist with setup and deployment, among other services. The city intends to replace its existing system with a proven commercial off-the-shelf software service. The city's goal is to take advantage of a modern system that is designed around best practices, allowing the city to streamline and improve processes that result in timely, accurate, and easy-to-access information. More specifically, the system would meet the following objectives: consolidate information, streamline business processes, provide a user-friendly and intuitive user interface to promote system use and productivity, eliminate the need for redundant data entry, eliminate the need for excessive manual input when preparing the annual budget and financial statements, improve and/or provide necessary reports and reporting capabilities, provide interface capabilities with third-party systems particularly for cash receding, provide vendor and customer self-service, provide help desk services, provide data storage capabilities. Some of the functionalities or modules to be acquired are financial management, bid and purchasing management, budgeting, capital assets, full loan module, enterprise permitting and licensing, customer and vendor online access, payroll, time and attendance, revenue management, and civic services, among others. The total for this purchase is $2,138,388.63, which includes $1,157,015 in upfront costs plus travel expenses, $403,272 in recurring costs for years two and three, and $170,829.63 in sales tax, plus a contingency of $215,000. Funding for this action is budgeted, is included in our budget. It is important to note also that the city locked in software prices for years four and five at a 5% increase on current-year prices. The staff recommends that the mayor and council authorize the city manager to execute software-as-a-service agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc. The contract amount is $2.1 million plus a contingency of $215,000 to procure enterprise resource planning software functionality and implementation services utilizing the Sourcewell Contract. The alternative to not approving this action would be to keep the city's current ERP, which does not adequately serve the city's needs. I pause for your questions.
I do have a question. Will this help us with our business license and wastewater billing?
Yes, sir.
Processes?
Yes.
Automating them, hopefully, and also checks and balances and all that good stuff?
Yes, and over the last, what, two years, we've been cleaning up our data, and Jamie has been leading that charge, cleaning up our data to make sure that once...
This will help her make a, do even better job, right?
Yes. We had to clean it up to make sure that when we deploy that software, that whatever information we put in there is clean data that we can work from.
Go all the way through, there'll be back-and-forth communication with the review process, and they'll be able to go all the way to a payment online. So they never really would have to step foot in here. They can upload attachments with...
So they can sign up for garbage pickup and all that stuff online, too? That'd be awesome. Okay. Don't have to come down here.
No.
That was a great question, because that's what I was going to ask, too, but also, you know, I always thought it was like, standardize our billing, because you get a bill like for, you know, your trash sewer, but then maybe, you know, your dog license, whatever that month, you know, it should be like one bill from the city, you know, for all the services you get. So are we going to integrate a lot of that stuff? But it sounds like we're going to have online payment as well?
We cannot promise to integrate the billing. We could work on that. However, we can integrate the payment. So a customer can go online and choose to pay dog license, wastewater, whatever it is, but the billing we may not be able to...
That's about what I'm talking, yes. So you can just go in and take care of all your stuff in one easy place and leave your slippers on at home. The other question, Jamie, is I feel for you for cleaning up all the data. I can't imagine, because I've done that for my small company, which I can't imagine what you're doing. But what's our rollout time, you know, once we get this? Because I, obviously, it sounds like you've been preparing for it for a while, so I know it's still going to be a big deal, so.
There will be 30 to 45 days of setting up, the company's setting up things, setting up the schedule. Then they will be meeting with us. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting with them earlier today. They will be meeting with us within 30 to 45 days. Hopefully, they should be launching in March of 2023, and one year from now, I believe the financial management piece should be deployed. One year from then, I'm sorry.
Donna, go ahead.
And along with that, what about the training and support to, you know, for our staff? What are they including in that?
Training is also included in the contract price.
Anybody else? So, yeah, just for the public, I mean, a 2008 software system is old. So this is very much needed, and thank you for all the hard work I know you've put into this, especially cleaning up the data.
Yes.
And then now transferring it over. I can't imagine, and I'm glad I don't have your job.
We're glad you have it.
We're glad you have that job. So any other comments or questions from anybody? All right, thank you both. All right, then I'll entertain resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution Number 5497. A resolution of the council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Tyler Technologies, Inc. for enterprise resource planning software as a service for the city, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Tyler Technologies, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve Resolution 5497 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddlestone.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. Thank you both. All right, next item is J-1. This is considered the appointment of Victor Gomez. I didn't see Victor here. Is he here?
I didn't see him.
Yeah, I didn't see him, but this is the final position, actually, on the Transit Advisory Committee. And so I know Deb's here. And so, yeah, this is the final seat, and then we'll have our first meeting. Is it going to be in January now? January 11th? Okay, so the first advisory committee meeting will be on January 11th. But Victor has graciously volunteered for this last position. Does anybody have any comments on it, or can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Victor, and thank you for volunteering. Next is our item 11s, our public hearings. So we'll start with the first one, which is L-1 and Resolution Number 5273.15. And it is the planning department's show for the rest of the night.
If it's okay with mayor and council, I'm going to, there are two items, L-1 and L-2, are very, very similar, so I'll present them as one item.
And we'll vote on them separately.
Vote on them separately.
Okay, that'd be fine.
So staff is requesting a minor amendment to the Casa Grande 2030 general plan to change the roadway classifications from a minor arterial to a major collector for Clayton Road west of Burris and east of Ethington, and Chuchu Road slash Florence Street north of Peters and south of Ash. You can see them highlighted on the screen here. The Clayton Road is up in our industrial area, and the Chuchu Florence is the border of our industrial and downtown areas. And we'll zoom in a little bit. Clayton Road, again, you can see here, this is where CCP is being developed and Kohler currently. And then when you look at the Chuchu alignment, we've got multiple projects happening on the west side of that right now. Quick overview, the minor arterial is 110 feet of rideaway. It typically has four travel lanes and a center lane. The minor arterial has two different configurations you can do, which is four travel lanes or potentially three travel lanes and a center lane with some bike lanes on the perimeter. This amendment is to ensure that the city is coordinating the transportation network to meet the projected traffic volumes associated with new and existing development. It is good practice to ensure that we are not under or overdes... It is good practice to ensure that we are not under or over-designing or constructing the transportation network within the city. So the four principal reasons that we're requesting this amendment is, number one, is carrying capacity. Staff finds that the carrying capacity for a major collector is adequate to handle the anticipated traffic value volumes in these two areas. Number two is driveway spacing. So major collector roadways are less restrictive regarding that driveway spacing, and it's beneficial to those developments proposed for the areas in terms of access to their sites. Number three is the results in more developable land. As you can see, it's less right-of-way to be dedicated. And number four is it reduces the roadway construction and maintenance cost. So it's both upfront cost and long-term cost for, for any of those projects. In looking at the review criteria for a general plan amendment, we have seven criteria. Tonight, we're just gonna concentrate on two of them, the rest have been covered in the staff report. And number three criteria is describe how the proposed amendment enhances or has no impact on mobility and traffic congestion. So this amendment is to ensure we are planning for appropriate road classifications and not allocating unnecessary resources to constructing an overbuilt road network in areas that do not warrant it. The change also allows for reduced driveway spacing, as mentioned before, and it provides more options for those landowners to provide those access. And number six is also, is how, describe in detail how any of the general plan goals and/or action steps are achieved by the proposed amendment. Goal CTM1, when considering changes to the land use or transportation elements of this plan, the city will consider the relationship between land use and the need for supportive transfer, transportation infrastructure. Goal CTM2, the capacity of the city's transportation system will be in balance with planned and current land uses. And then goal CTM6 is to reduce the city's cost of construction for new streets when possible, while keeping them practical and safe. So both these areas kind of meet all those goals and action steps within our general plan, among others. In regards to public notification, a notice was public in the dispatch. We did talk to surrounding landowners in regards to these changes as well. We did get one response from Pinal County reviewing the proposal, because it does impact some of their transportation network as well, and they had no concerns with these, these two areas. So in conclusion, and we'll start with the Clayton Road, Planning Commission on a 6-0 vote recommends city council approve the minor general plan amendment to reclassify Clayton Road from a minor arterial to a major collector. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, anybody? Bob?
Does, does the reasoning on going from a minor arterial to a major collector, does it look at truck traffic as well, or does it consider that these are going to have a large number of trucks?
It, it does, yeah, and we consulted quite a bit with our traffic, with our Public Works Department when making this decision. And, and some of these are a little bit unique, because they're actually kind of in the, the area where it's manufacturing and industry and move into another area. So you won't see quite as much traffic going on that route, like especially the Chuchu and Florence, but also Clayton, as you go west, it kind of dead-ends at the, at Main Street. So we don't anticipate that's gonna be the heavier used route in that area, and so we, we made sure that we were making, that we were consulting with Public Works to ensure that the traffic area in those counts, based on the uses that we have for it, which is manufacturing and industry for the whole area, whether it's county or, or city land at the current time, we made sure that we could handle that. We consulted with them, with the different users in the area too, as, as we were planning access, and, and making sure that we're coordinating those efforts and, and not putting us in a situation where we were under-planning these roads.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll take L1 first, this is, I need a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Oh, sorry, me, that's right.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone, I'll open the floor. If there's anybody here to speak on this issue, please step forward. All right, seeing none, then we close the floor, and then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.15. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030, and as adopted by resolution number 5273, and as previously amended by changing the roadway use designation from minor arterial to major collector for a portion of Clayton Road west of Beris Road and east of Ethington Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of resolution number 5273.15 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston. Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is L2. This is the other section, this is the Chuchu Road, Chuchu Florence Street. And this is a public hearing also, so I will open the floor for any public comment, anyone here who would like to make comment on this item. All right, I'm gonna close the floor, and then I'll call for resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.16. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor amendment to the City of Casa Grande General Plan 2030, as adopted by resolution number 5273, and as previously amended by changing the roadway designation from minor arterial to major collector for Chuchu Road, Florence Street, located north of Peters Road and south of Ash Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution 527316 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item L3. This is resolution number 5273.17. Ms. Saranowski?
Good evening, council. So this request is to allow major general plan amendments to occur twice a calendar year, and to expand minor general plan amendments from 10 acres to 50 acres. Under our current general plan, major amendments are only allowed once a calendar year. Staff is requesting this change to take advantage of recently updated state law and imposing major general plans to occur twice a calendar year, with a cycle of January to June and July to December. Staff felt this was sufficient due to extensive processing and requirements for a major general plan amendment, which includes two public hearings, one, one has to occur off-site, and it also includes a 60-day review period for reviewing agencies. So in addition to that, we also request you to change the minor general plan amendment and expanding this from 10 acres to 50 acres, and these are processed in conjunction with zone changes. And this will also help to reduce the number of major general plan amendments. So Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommended the city council approve this request for a minor general, general plan text amendment to expand general, minor general plan amendments from 10 acres to 50 acres, and to allow major general plan amendments to occur twice a year. Happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Okay, thank you. Good job of describing it. So there are no questions? This is a public hearing though, so I will open the floor for public comment. This is on item L3. Okay, seeing nobody jump up, then I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will call for a resolution number, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5273.17. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, adopting a minor tax amendment to the City of Casa Grande 2030 general plan, as adopted by resolution number 5273, and as previously amended by expanding the minimum acreage that requires a major amendment from 10 acres to 50 acres, and allowing major general plan amendments to occur twice in a calendar year.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5273.17 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is L4. This is a public hearing for approval of ordinance number 1178.398.2.
Good evening, so this is a request for Spanish Trails P A D for, which is a multi-manufactured home park, excuse me, at Casa Grande Avenue and between Viola and O'Neil. This request is to add, oops, six additional spaces, bringing the total from 125, sorry, excuse me, 195 to 201, and the additional spaces will be located at the southwest corner of the site highlighted on the slide. So the site was previously approved under the 2020 general plan, under the neighborhood's land use category, with, which limited the density to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. The initial proposal was for 203 spaces, however, this did not meet the general plan standards, and was revised with 195 spaces. Since then, this area has been moved within the community corridor land use category, which allows density of up to 25 dwelling units per acre. So this new density would be at 4.75 dwelling units per acre, and is in conformance with the 2030 general plan. The staff report goes into additional detail on this as well. Regarding notification, staff met or exceeded the requirements. I did receive one inquiry from a neighbor, just making sure what they were doing, so wasn't for or against it. So with that, Planning Commission on a 7-0 vote recommended city council approve this request for the Spanish Trails P A D amendment request, DSA 220075, with the following condition of approval.
Anybody have any questions? Can you go back to where they added those spots?
Yes, they're in the southwest corner.
What was there before, just open space?
Yeah, it was just open space.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just a comment, I, I appreciate you putting in there the public notification, because I know the neighborhood has monitored this pretty closely, but I do think the addition of six spaces is pretty, pretty minor, so I, I think I'm good with it.
Anybody else? All right, seeing no one else, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to any public comments. This is on item L4. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'm gonna call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.398.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Spanish Trails West planned area development for property generally located west of Casa Grande Avenue, between O'Neil Drive and Viola Street, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.398.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, before you vote, we're generally blessed with having seven council members here, but I take the advantage, when we only have five, to remind you that under our charter, all ordinances, which is in the section that we're going to now, will always take four of you to pass, so just a reminder, I do it every time, so.
Thank you, Brett.
It's all I get to do.
You keep us, that's how you keep us in line.
Okay. Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, next is item L4. And you wanna talk about both?
L5.
Oh, I'm sorry, L5. Looking at L5 and saying L4. Is this something you can cover, both these, talk about both of them together, since it's the same project, or are they, I know they're different things?
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's a great question, and for the essence of time, I wish I could say we could talk about both of them. I can try to include as much as possible on this presentation, but the way it's been set up, I think we're gonna have to-
Okay, that's fine.
-be separate.
That's fine.
But as lengthy as I will be on this one, I promise I'll-
You'll be shorter on the next one?
Truncate it on the next one, yeah.
Okay.
So this is a request for a zone change for a portion of the Post Ranch P A D to R2. To give you a little bit of background, Post Ranch is a planned area development located on the, out, near the outskirts of town, on the east side of I-10, at the southwest corner of Toltec Buttes and State Route 287. It was approved back in 2005 as a 647 planned area development zone. And the request in front of you this evening is to rezone 560, near, almost 560 acres of that P A D to R2. Originally, Post Ranch was approved for 1,620 single-family homes. The goal behind this rezone is, with recently passed state legislation, the applicant is seeking to increase the density to 2,135 single-family homes, which is the driver for the zone change request. As a separate application, which I'll be discussing after this one, there is a request to rezone a 22.05 acre area to R3. As part of the R2 request, the applicant did provide a conceptual plan, as part of the narrative submitted for the rezone, and this conceptual plan, if this zone change is approved, will be mimicked in a preliminary plat. It would have to be in substantial compliance with the lotting layout that you see here. The applicant is proposing 23 single-family neighborhood parcels, 71% of which are 5,400 square feet in size, which is 45-foot by 125-foot minimum lot sizes, and then 29% of the lots are 50 feet by 120 feet wide in dimension. So that brings you to a total of 2,135 single-family home sites. They're proposing an eight-acre Central Park feature, a trail system identified in that dotted blue line, and then towards the west part of the site, they're proposing a 16-acre school site and a 6.5-acre wastewater treatment facility, which may or may not be used to accommodate additional development on the east side, but certainly it's proposed to accommodate the wastewater needs for Post Ranch. The applicant proposes some slightly more restrictive standards than what would otherwise be allowed within the R2 zone. So for example, they are proposing that the minimum lot size is 5,400 square feet. Ordinarily, in the R2, 5,000 square feet is the minimum lot size. They are proposing minimum lot dimensions of both 45 and 50 feet, although 71% of the lots would be the 45-foot minimum width, while, while the 29% would be 50-foot minimum. They're proposing five-in-five setbacks, which is the standard R2 requirement, and then some specific front setbacks, et cetera. Should this be instead rezoned as a, or amended as a P A D, and subject to our recently adopted P A D residential design standards, it would be slightly more restrictive, for example, the- For example, the minimum lot size would be 5,500 square feet and the minimum lot dimensions would be 50. With, and I should also say that 5,500 square feet minimum lot size would be allowed, provided that at least 25% of the lots are 6,500 square feet or larger. When looking at zone changes, it's subject to meeting several criteria, which the staff report gets into more detail. The crux of the review criteria have to, has to do with compliance with the general plan. This area is within the neighborhood's general plan category. Single family developments with homes on individual lots shall have a maximum gross density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. This development with their conceptual lotting plan proposes a density of 3.6 dwelling units per acre. So it does fit within the maximum density allowed. But specifically, these are the three criteria that we look at. The first criteria is that the action is consistent with the city's general plan, including goals, policies, and applicable elements. One of the goals is to preserve the unique qualities of neighborhoods within the city. And an action step that's used to accomplish that goal is to encourage building and site design of new developments to blend in with existing developments in order to strengthen the unique character and style of Casa Grande neighborhoods. Staff feels that this zone change could potentially conflict with this goal and action step. The reason is, is that there's planned and existing developments to the west, south, and east that are zoned P A D and they're subject to larger lot size and lot width requirements. So on this graphic here shows some proposed planned area developments that lie to the west and north, which require larger lot sizes and larger minimum lot widths and larger side yard setbacks than which the Post Ranch development is proposing. And since this is near the city limits, to the east of the site and to the south is rural. So this is really on, near, nearing the outskirts where there's an expectation for there to be more of a rural type development pattern. The other criteria that we look at is that the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. So eight P A Ds were recently rezoned to R two over the past couple of years to benefit from recent state legislation that grants an increase in certificates of assured water supply for properties that already have been granted certificates of assured water supply. On those eight P A Ds, Planning Commission recommended with council adoption conditions of record to incorporate design and open space standards that are otherwise missing from the standard R two zone. After those eight different zone changes, city council did express concern about all of these R two zone change requests. Some of the concerns were related to the narrowness of the lots, the 45 feet and the reduced side setbacks of five and five, conflicts with established neighborhoods around town built to P A D design standards. And there was concern that it would affect the overall character of the city. There was also concerns that this would create parking issues as on-street parking is more limited since the lots are more narrow, the driveways are going to come closer to one another. So you're usually only going to have one car on the street per lot. And if the garage is not used for parking, but rather storage, it creates some, some concerns about parking availability. And then also the absence of larger lots that you could get in P A D zones would result in some home buyers locating elsewhere, purchasing homes outside of the city. Although we do have the need for affordable housing, there is a segment of population looking for move-up housing. And traditional P A Ds can offer a little bit more variety for those move-up style homes. An example of a typical R two neighborhood with 45 foot wide lots would look similar to this. And as you can see, it does limit the ability for on-street parking and it does create a concern of more of a cookie cutter style housing pattern. In response to city council's concerns, the city did recently update the P A D residential design standards to provide more affordable, attainable housing. And this was done by reducing the lot width and lot sizes. It went from 55 foot minimum to 50 and the lot sizes went from 6,000 minimum to 5,500. And this enables an increase in density from former P A Ds while preserving neighborhood quality. The recently revised P A D residential design standards ensure that some of the development will provide for larger lots so that, that home buyers do have a potential additional housing choice. Should this be amended as a P A D as opposed to being zone changed to R two, does eliminate the consideration of a list of imposed conditions placed on an R two zone. And a P A D allows developers to propose a higher lot yield due to state legislation's allowance for an increase of cause. So staff does acknowledge that it is important for every new development to take advantage or take the opportunity that the state allows them to with regard to an increase in the certificates of assured water supply. But staff feels that with this zone change, there's still some certificates of assured water supply still left on the table. And the reason is, is in the currently approved P A D, there's approval for a total of 2,416 dwellings. With this amendment, it would create an R two area that yields 2,135 single family homes. So it's actually a reduction of 281 lots. And in following city council's direction or, or general response to the previous zone changes to R two, at its November third, 2022 meeting, staff had recommended denial of this zone change. But Planning Commission did reject that recommendation and instead did move to approve the zone change request on a vote of five to two from Post Ranch P A D to R two. However, Planning Commission did forward this recommendation subject to a list of conditions of record, which are made part of the ordinance. I just want to bullet point these conditions. One is that multifamily development is prohibited and that housing product subdivision landscape elements are to follow the P A D residential design standards. So it would still in, in some part be developed as if it were a P A D zone. Right-of-way to be dedicated prior to development should right-of-way be requested or needed by the city. So for example, overfilled road, there may be a project north or south that would necessitate some additional right-of-way. Instead of waiting for the developer to dedicate this, the city could ask for it previously. And that the maximum allowable gross density would be limited to 3.76 dwelling units per acre, which complies with the conceptual lotting pattern that was provided as part of the applicant's narrative. Lastly, the development would be built in, would have to be built in substantial compliance with the applicant's narrative, particularly in regard to the minimum front yard setback of 20 feet and the additional standards as displayed on the screen and included within the staff report. And that concludes my presentation.
Go ahead. Oh, Bob, sorry.
Thank you, Matt. James, the, the planning or the existence of a treatment plant in this neighborhood, can you tell us why that's in there? And I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen that in one of these.
Sure. So where the project is located is quite a good distance away from the existing sewer infrastructure in the city. So through discussions between Post Ranch Development and Public Works, it was decided that a potentially acceptable alternative is a satellite wastewater treatment facility. That way, if they were to develop a satellite wastewater campus, the processing of the wastewater can be handled on-site as opposed to a more costly solution, which would be to extend wastewater to its current terminus, which is located near I-10 and, and Quartzon.
Do we have any restrictions or anything on the books for them doing this? Or are we, are we potentially creating an atmosphere where other developers could come in and say, well, I want to, I want to put a little plant in my neighborhood too. It seems, to me, it seems like a bad idea to allow that. But I, this is new to me. I haven't, I haven't seen this.
I haven't looked over, but I heard someone scoot up next to me. So I will let Paul address that.
Okay.
Councilman Huddleston, that's an excellent question. And of course, at the staff level, we've been asking those same questions of ourselves. But I'm going to tell you the technical answer. There's a regional wastewater plan called a 208 plan that the city had developed many years ago that just talks about how wastewater service would be provided to all the property within Casa Grande, as well as some adjoining properties. That 208 plan indicated that our, our wastewater scheme was to have one centralized wastewater treatment plant where it is today and continue to expand that to, as growth occurred, to continue to provide wastewater service. And today, in today's world, as we have really challenges to providing wastewater service, both to our far western part of our city where our industrial growth is happening, as well as east of the interstate, we're reconsidering that, whether or not that wastewater service scheme set forth in our 208 plan is really the best plan for us. And we're looking at amending the 208 plan to allow for a satellite, potentially two satellite wastewater plants. I know that Public Works has briefed you recently on the one on the west side for the west industrial development to relieve a little bit of, of our, of our current wastewater facility and potentially to the east side. No decisions have been finalized regarding that, that change in our scheme for wastewater service. But I can tell you that there has been discussions about servicing Post Ranch as well as other developments on the east side of the 10 with a new satellite plant that would actually be likely built by developers, but owned and managed by the city and operated by the city. I'm not sure this is the location for it because it has to meet some more regional needs for other developments on the east side, which the wastewater in this area tends to flow north. And so the, you know, I can't tell you that this is the location, but potentially we will be coming back to say, hey, we, we think we need to modify our 208 plan to allow for a couple satellite plants in the city, as well as our large centralized plant.
And Paul, is there, the, the technology has changed also in terms of wastewater treatment plants. So some of the new technology allows for closed system?
Absolutely.
So it doesn't, you won't have what we have?
The technology's certainly changed. The footprints are smaller.
Yeah, they're smaller.
There's not as much open lagoons. There's more enclosed processing. So absolutely, the, the technology has changed.
And, and to follow up, what we're doing tonight, does, that doesn't lock us into a satellite sewer plant?
No. Okay. It does not.
And my, and my last question was about the certificates of assured water supply. Does, is, is Post Ranch covered with that? They have certificates? They're just looking to add lots and stretch those certificates?
Well, actually, they're not stretching their certificates. They're reducing them. So what happens is they currently have 2,416 certificates for 2,416 dwellings.
Oh, okay.
But it's a mixture of single family and like condominium or townhome units, as you can see on the screen. They're proposing to create 2,135 single family homes. So they are actually reducing the number. They're not taking full advantage of all their cause they have today, nor are they taking advantage of additional cause that ADWR may grant them under the new state legislation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Matt?
I want to follow up a bit on the, the treatment situation. Isn't there also talk of a, like a joint plant with county, maybe other municipalities around? Would that be a solution for this so we wouldn't have to?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, and just building off some of the feedback that Mr. Tice has just provided. When Post Ranch originally began to, started their endeavor for a potential development, a change in development, they actually understood that the one alternative to running the effluent through town and building the, the main lines was to build the satellite plant that was identified in the P A D. That's, that's the location that Councilmember Huddleston was referring to. And there, and as, as Mr. Tice has pointed out, there very well may still be a scenario where we build that plant there. However, as we begin to look more at a regional, from a regional perspective and begin to have discussions with Penal County about the need for them to potentially cite a, a plant on the east side of our town, we have really begun to engage in some serious discussions about a regional plant that would actually serve both residents within the city as well as residents within the county. As, as Paul's pointed out, there's not been any type of final decision made on that. There's still a lot of evaluation research is taking place. Our team is part of that dialogue. But we are evaluating the idea of perhaps servicing anything east of the interstate at that regional plant. So there could be a scenario where if that plant is cited, is located or cited more northernly, northernly from Post Ranch and this site would not be utilized for a satellite plant.
And then following up with other, thank you for that. That's probably a path forward possibly. The other thing is, you know, the other one looked a little nicer, but, but these guys are the experts in development. It's a bit of a struggle because we want to get these different sized lots and everything. But on the other hand, we also want attainable type housing. And I think this is the way, you know, this is more what people are looking for according to market research. And I'm sure that these guys have done that since they're investing their money in it. But, you know, as they're going down on their certificates, that's, that's an interesting concept. But the other thing was the, the minimum setbacks of 20 feet. And with the lot depth of over only 120, because we had a presentation from you, Paul, about varying the setbacks, which makes neighborhoods look.
Don't look so cookie cutter.
Don't look so cookie cutter. And I liked that concept. But I don't know if that's possible with this.
Scenario.
Yeah, with this layout here or site plan.
So Councilman Herman, you're, you're right. Your recollection is exactly right, is the presentation was to allow for our, our two zones to have a 15 foot setback for the non-garage portion of the homes, like pull the living area forward and recess the garage, keep the garage back at least 20. This, this proposal is not taking advantage of that recent tax amendment. In my opinion, they should do so because it would allow that articulation can create better interest in the streetscape. But their proposal is to have the minimum setback of 20. They could still recess the garage to 25 and still receive, get the same articulation, but it would use more of the backyard to do so.
Yeah, thank you, because that's what I was thinking too, is that it would, because it has a lot of straight streets looking in this plan. So it would give a better visual impact if some were 15 and some were at 20. Because as I learned from the city planner, it's an easy way to make it look a little more varied. So, and I think it would give them more flexibility with floor plans and stuff too, more living space. space.
Jeff?
Paul, this question may be for you rather than James. James, you mentioned there are eight developments currently that are zoned for R2, correct?
Correct.
Were there any developments that requested R2 that we rejected? I cannot remember any.
This is the first R2 proposal that we've had since the policy shift with council, the policy direction that we thought we heard, and the PAD amendment that we instituted.
So Paul, could they keep this PAD and increase the number of lots?
Yes. But what that would take, Mr. Mayor, is if you see the Central Park on this scheme, you can see that there's some what we'll call alley-loaded homes. They, and you may be familiar with those in Verrato. We call, planners refer to those as new urbanist kind of design, where you have, the homes are, have no front garages. The garages are loaded off the alley, which really improves your ability to do on-street parking and create lots that are as small as 3,500 or 4,000 square feet with good street interest. So actually, you can get smaller lots, single-family homes. It takes a little more unique design. It's probably a little more costly for the developer. But yes, there are ways of doing this as a PAD and getting at least the 2,400 lots and maybe, probably more.
Is the developer here?
He is. His team is here.
Pretty sure.
Could we hear from them as to why they want to do this? For me, it doesn't, it's not making a lot of sense to lower your number of lots unless you have, you know, some special design thoughts on how you want to develop it. I did see those ones in the middle that had the alley access, but that's just a few of the homes. It's not, not very many.
Jason Hadley, 7507 East McDonald Drive, Suite 2, Scottsdale, Arizona, 85250. Mayor McFarlane, council members, appreciate your time, appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the thoughtful questions. So I'll start off the bat with where we started. We would prefer to not have the wastewater treatment plant where it's at. We just accommodated for that as we move through and work through the maturation's of the 208 and where that will go. So hopefully, it will not be on our site necessarily, but it'll be a more regional solution, which is preferred for everybody because it's more cost-effective with economies of scale and how that'll come together. So that's, that's kind of the first item. The second item, I believe we started to talk about that front setback. We would be happy to stip to a 15-foot front setback and change that as part of our zoning to livable with a 20-foot for there. In fact, I'm going to show you some imagery of exactly where we would like to go with that, because that's really something that we believe in, and it's part of density with amenity is kind of what our whole purpose is of our presentation.
And we're, we are very cognizant of the need for density, and we understand it. It's just we don't want everything to look the same. So that's, that's really, I think, the council's concern.
And it is for us as well.
Okay.
And so-
Go ahead. Go ahead. I interrupt you.
No, that's okay. And then, and then the other one that I'm going to hit on is, I think there's a bit of a difference of opinion of where we're at with reducing density versus where we're at with capturing density. So one of the key market, market was brought up as we talk about market. So this plan is not reducing density based on single-family detached, per se, based on the original PAD to now. So what we're trying to capture is many single-family detached owned units that we can get in Casa Grande for employers and their employees. That's the goal. That was, that was the mission from day one. Where we could, and staff is correct on, if we condoize, or if we have attached units that are still within that realm, we could get more units over that. The market does not bear that. It hasn't for years in Casa Grande. It could for pockets of little elements here and there, but with market uncertainty, as it always ebbs and flows. I entitled this property back in 2005. I did Vilago before that. It's just one of those things where we look at what the market looks like. And so we want to bring single-family, high-quality, single-family detached. It might be more dense, but it comes with a big amenity. And so that's really what the package is. So there's kind of a disparity in how that's presented, I think. So I won't bother you with all the back and forth. I think Jim's presentation was really solid on, on kind of the history and the difference between where we were at. So really, what we're talking about is balancing that amenity and that 208 that we're talking about, and being able to spread those costs from an infrastructure standpoint in a regional system. And one of the maps that's on your screen right now kind of shows that. So if you, if you kind of look at the eastern side of, quote, "Phase 1 growth area," you can see Post Ranch outlined in yellow there. So we're kind of out there from that stage. There's our, our site as far as where other cause units are. The other thing about developing and trying to get as many single-family detached units as we can is, there's only in blue right next to us. Those are the other ones with cause that have pre-plats. So it's a very limited amount. So the more that we can get in that detached realm is really where we were headed from. And again, from a regional sewer standpoint, being part of that east sewer expansion, that's that east-west difference that, when we developed Vilago and other properties at the time, it was always the 208 that's on the west side of I-10, and we'll pipe stuff to there, and that'll be the regional solution, even as we updated maps east-west and as that changes. So we're trying to be cognizant of that and kind of work with the city on that. So what are we really trying to get to? What we're trying to get to is a, is a traditional neighborhood design that is a park district model. So when we talk about small density or smaller lots and five-and-five setbacks and trying to get continuity of neighborhood, what we're really talking about is also trying to amenitize that. And so what we've gone through, we talked about setbacks, so I'm not going to bore you with a lot of that. But really, what we're looking at, on this map in particular, to kind of highlight it, as Jim mentioned in his presentation, there's 23 neighborhoods with 26 different parks. So everything in yellow that we're highlighting is different parks. And each one of those parks is situated so that as you drive into your community, into your neighborhood, you're driving into a park in an open space. And each one of those entry features is a median separated landscaped roadway, so that as you're pulling into each one of those parks, as you come home at night from work, you're arriving to a park, right? So that's the goal. It's a real park district model. And this comes from, Paul, I think, mentioned Verrato. So I'm one of the lucky few who was able to work on D.C. Ranch, the Verrato Design Team, Marley Park Design Team, the Eastmark Design Team for parts of it. And so I've got a lot of experience in park district and how we front and have eyes on green. And we brought those elements to this project. So we're not just coming in and saying, "Oh, we want a bunch of 45s and 50s." We're really creating a master plan community that is a little bit different in pattern because it's not your modified curve. It is more of a grid, but it comes with those parks that really anchor each neighborhood. So your walking distance from each park in here is about five to 10 minutes max. It's more like five, because they're at the end of almost every block. And that's with that 20% open space. So again, I think Jim's presentation was perfect. It's really, it's got everything that a PAD would have in it, for the most part, with the exception of the five-and-five setbacks and those 45-foot wide lots. That's, that's really the big difference. So these are examples of coming into each neighborhood. We just picked a few of them that would have shade Ramadas, shade seating, play structures, seeded, shaded pathways, sand, play, grass. We're going through all the programming of all of these now. So you'd arrive to each one of these and each one of the neighborhoods that we're looking at. So each neighborhood has its focal park.
Yeah, Vilago has some of those as well.
Yeah, yep. That was a big part of that design element when we did that project as well. So it's a very similar component to that. We're just more of a grid instead of the curve that you have in Vilago, the great big curve. The other thing that's unique about this property is turning the constraint into an opportunity. So we have an El Paso gas line, we have the Ho-Ho Com irrigation, and we have San Carlos irrigation. The irrigations will be actually compressing those. And so 100-foot easement, we're going to underground and put that into 50-to-60-foot easement. But we're leaving the bulk of that, like the east-west, we're leaving the bulk of that in open space, so that we can connect neighborhoods, so that we can create those. So really, if you look at these sections and you look from the very top one as an example, and that 100-foot easement, the 100-foot easement is just the top line. Then we have a road with open space. So if you look at from wall to wall, that's the section kind of cutting through the central property. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty amazing from east-west and north-south to be able to have open space corridors that connect that way. And that allows us that extensive open space at 20%, as well as the connectivity with path and trails. And you can kind of see from the sections kind of how we've kind of conceptually planned that through. The other thing that we came to, our client came to us and said, "Jason, if we're going to keep 20, if we're not going to do the 15% in R2 and we're going to go to 20%, let's make it real," right? There's all kinds of ways to make open space, open space, and commit to it. Activating that open space with a health and wellness theme, with a park in every neighborhood, as well as it being connected with park horse, so that there's active activity nodes throughout. And so really, we've looked at stations throughout, along the Ho-Ho Com, along the San Carlos, and then in each one of the parks, so that there's a, there's a real true fitness element that ties together for the property. Jim and Paul both mentioned the grand park. So the grand park sits right in the middle, collectors coming in from north, south, east, and west. There is a ring road of local that's outside of here, so we don't have to drive everybody through here. You can go to your neighborhood, since it's in quadrants, and pull off way before that and come into your neighborhood and into a park. Or we can go to our central amenity, which is our grand park. Right now, it's programmed with a clubhouse restroom facility, bocce bags, a pool facility, pickleball complex, basketball court, sport court, four different turf areas. We've created an auto court area for food trucks, so we can do events, and shaded seating throughout. We've got a splash pad in addition to the pool. The park horse elements, I think there's 11 and 11 on each side. Those tie in and come into the park along the east-west linear. And then we also have parking all the way around it. So there's diagonal parking on the interior loop, so you can diagonal park there. And then because we've alley-loaded the 36 or 7 lots that go around it, they don't have driveways backing, so there's no backing up, so you can, and parallel park along the outside of there. So creates parking and a real central amenity, really not seen in Casa Grande right now. And that's kind of our flagship, and we're very, very proud of that. And again, that's part of our, kind of our 20% open space that we're looking at. So here's kind of the conceptual imagery of splash pad, pool, pickleball, for all you pickleball players, which seem to be growing by the day. Bocce, we have some life-size chess designed in multiple parks, as well as the big one, and shade. You know, we're in Arizona, so we, all of our shade components for tots and turf and all that good stuff. I'm also a huge fan of using trees for shade, shocking, but the placement of those. And so the lower right-hand corner has shade that we did in D.C. Ranch and Silverleaf, and some various Ramadas, the other Ramada is Verrato. And then the top row is imagery of food court, of kind of, or the, so trying to get food trucks for seasonal stuff, all within that kind of central amenity. So what does a park really look like with those 15-foot open, front setbacks that we were talking about to livable, which we would like to stip to, frankly? So at Verrato, here's, here's what that park looks like, alley-loaded, with 45 and 50-foot wides that are staggered. So there's 50, 55, and 45s all in that plan view of the park. And then this is where that, that street scene really comes alive, in that urban kind of design element. These are two stories. Again, lucky enough to kind of travel and look at why we look at verticality and those two steps up. In fact, we were working with the client at looking even raising those houses that are by the park a little bit more. It's interesting, you can bring the house closer and feel more comfortable when you get those. It's like a row home or a townhome and work through that kind of with grading. And then here's single stories. So these are all kind of elements that we would have kind of around the park. And then one of the things we've heard loud and clear is, what does a 45 or a 50 look like with 55s? We don't want cookie cutter, any more than anybody else does, which is to say, we don't. And so this is a Verrato streetscape of a 50-foot wide product neighborhood with five-and-fives. And again, I was going to actually ask to amend, to get a 15-foot front to livable as part of this entitlement, because this is what it gets us. It's hard to argue with a street like this. And those are small lots and smaller houses. And again, that's kind of what we're looking for, is that street tree program. And with the stipulations that were added by staff that we actually wholeheartedly agreed with to meet some of the PAD standards, the streetscape, the front yard landscape, and all those things will need to be met as part of this. And we're happy to accommodate that. This is a Marley Park picture, more of the same. 45-foot wide lots on open space translates to a street scene that looks like this. Anything but cookie cutter, and that's alley-loaded. Eastmark, again, an entry coming into a park. These are, to the right, are 45s and 50s. And we actually just took these because one of the things, I had my son, my son actually works for me, I don't recommend that for everybody, but I had him go out to Eastmark and shoot this neighborhood actually last week, because one of the things we like to talk about a lot is parking. Where does parking go, right? So these are 50-foot wide lots that they've even taken architecturally because they bring it forward. They have some side entries and, and, you know, you can see the street scene. There's parking. It's parkable. It's workable. And we also worked through, through those designs. As I look down there, I can't even see houses, right? So it can be done, and it can be done well, and we're looking to do that in Casa Grande. Another example is Queen Creek Station, which is also right there. Again, entries into open space. You see trees, not necessarily houses. And still working with those product types as we kind of work through different street scenes. And then these are entries, and you can kind of see as you kind of move into entries, I apologize for the lighting on some of them. But, you know, coming into park space, and that's how every neighborhood within Post Ranch is designed currently. So those are kind of the big overview things that we were talking about. I hope that touches on things. I didn't want to take a lot of your time to do that, but wanted to make sure that you were being heard and we were answering them. Also, comprehensive theme. So as part of a master plan community, we are a square mile. We are kind of an island unto ourselves, since we're surrounded by arterials, and we have 20-foot kind of open space buffers all around us. We heard a lot about fabric and how that fits into the fabric of Casa Grande, but yet we want to be unique, right? So we've kind of got a dichotomy there. I think what Post Ranch allows us is a really unique residential master plan community that's highly amenitized with open space, and it fits in with the fabric overall. It's its own section of land, and it will be a master plan community within that. The way Vilago's different than McCartney Center is different than, but they're all, they all kind of weave together because of the open space and the quality of development, even though they're very different communities right next to each other, right? So comprehensive theme, and we've, we're working through kind of those elements. So that kind of gives us kind of an overview of where we're headed with theme and amenity. And with that, I'll answer any other questions you might have. Yes? Councilman Huddlestone?
Go ahead, Bob.
Did I see a school site on-
Yes, there is. I believe Jim mentioned in his presentation, there's a 15-to-16 acre school site that has been reserved as of now. And then at a certain permit count, the school will say yes or no to whether or not they want to develop there. But we wholeheartedly want it as part of our community because we believe in that, and that really creates community. But yes, that has been reserved for now, and then it'll be up to the school district to either trigger that donation or not.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Matt?
A couple things, mostly comments, I think. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Looks a lot better with the street view than just the view of all the little square lots.
Yeah.
That helped me a lot. I, obviously, I would like to stip to the 15-foot livable setback because I think it adds a lot more character. It doesn't, so you're not just looking down the street, because I've lived in different neighborhoods here.
Can we make that a-
Can we make that adjustment?
Yeah, I think, I think.
It's allowable, right?
So right now, it is, it is gonna be an R2 district, so the R2 standards are gonna apply, except there is one condition of record in 6A that requires a 20-foot setback for minimum front yard. So what I'm hearing is, if I think.
Change that to 15.
Changing that to, well, you still want to continue, I think the minimum front yard of 20, but say, provided that setbacks may be reduced to 15 feet for livable space.
Correct.
Right? So I think that.
So we can change that wording?
Yeah, I think as you get to there, if you, if you want to, we'd need to make an amendment to condition 6A, to just add in, take out the period and do a comment, say, provided that setbacks may be reduced to 15 feet for livable space.
All right, thank you, Brett.
The parks, I mean, I think their retention as well, but it looks like they're more amenitized than just a grass retention base.
Yeah, great, great question. So everything is green, because it's open space and it's an entitlement project, right? So, so it's the easiest way to differentiate it. Turf will be limited to usable turf where needed, or, or as a drainage component as needed. There will be retention in most of the parks, absolutely, but there'll be high and dry activity areas, and we'll adhere to kind of the, the standards needed, both from a landscape and park perspective. The initial thought is usable turf where it's needed, the rest zero scape, to try and keep water use down. The flip of that would be with the MAG 208, and depending on what happens with effluent, and because there, there might be enough units to produce effluent but not have anywhere to go, we would look at a purple pipe scenario, you know, down the road, to be able to use that for turf. But yeah, it'd be, it'd be kind of limited turf, but mostly desert.
I'm glad you brought that up, because you could be the first development in the city to use a purple pipe system, and that would be a really neat thing.
Yeah, we would love that.
If you did that. So one thing that, when I'm talking to people around town, talking about other developments, what's the, and it's a loaded question, I understand, but the certainty or the guarantee of that, that grand park with those amenities, and the pocket parks with those amenities?
I believe it's stipped based on the site plan, so we, I mean, that's our list of amenities.
It's gotta have the clubhouse, and it's gotta have the, okay.
That's my understanding.
Is that sound good, James?
So, so the next step in this process, if the zoning is approved, would be for the developer to submit a preliminary plat, along with a landscape plan for those common areas. And they, they would be bound to doing that. Some of it's a little bit of phasing, you know?
Yeah.
And so it's gonna be a phased project clearly, so.
It's a big project.
Yeah. So those amenities will get phased in as those neighborhood areas are.
But there's some security, there's some security that.
They will be there at that point.
That those things will happen.
There is.
Okay.
With the final plat, we require a financial assurance for all subdivision improvements, including those open space areas.
Because I don't want you to show like a pool and this, and then say, oh, we're just gonna change it to a park.
We're just kidding.
Just grass, or just.
Donna?
No, I just want to thank Jason, because I had the opportunity to meet, meet with you all, and you answered a lot of my questions. And I think, like you said, Matt, looking at those pictures is a lot different from looking at just a lot sizes. So I don't have any more questions, but thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, and Paul had done a lot of work on, on some changes, this 15-set, setback livable space, so that we had variances in, in, you know, in fronts, right? It's not just, you can look down the street and see the front of every house.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the floor to the public.
Good, thanks. I just want to take a second. My name is Kevin Peterson, 36, 3369 East Queen Creek Road, Gilbert, Arizona, 85 something the other. Sorry. 85142, I believe. Or maybe that's my residential one, I apologize.
It's close enough.
Thank you for, and I'm part of the development team, so I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, thank you all for taking the time to, to hear this project. We are proud of it. As you can see, we hired the right team that knows how to design, and knows how to put master plans together, and they've done a fabulous job. Unfortunately, we kind of got caught up in the timing of the R2 switch, and the reason we got caught up in the timing is that we did take a lot of time, about seven months, to really come up with a very sophisticated and a very quality, quality plan. And I just want everybody to know that there's been a lot of work that's gone up to this point. But the most important thing I want to clarify, because I think there was a little bit of a misunderstanding in the communication tonight, dealing with the cause units. True, Post Ranch has cause units for about 2,400 units. Under the existing old plan, there was just over 1,600 single-family units. And as we all know, the multifamily units under Arizona Water don't technically require the cause units. So we are not decreasing our use of the cause units, we're actually increasing to take advantage as much as we possibly can of those cause units and not losing them. And so we're going from around the 1,600 number up to about the 2,100 unit number. So I think there was some confusion, and we may be going down, trying to take advantage of the cause units, but the reality is, we, we are substantially coming up to take care of, take advantage of the cause units, which are so valuable for the town and also for developers that we don't want to use, or that we do not want to lose. So we're proud of this project, and we are hopeful and appreciative of the support that you could hopefully give us here in a few minutes. Are there any questions of, of me at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? All right, seeing nobody else, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do you all have any other questions? Okay. All right, then I'll call for a ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.225.2. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from post-ranch planned area development to single-family residential on property located generally near the southwest corner of Talteck Buttes and Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.
Blake?
We're gonna do the amendment.
Okay.
Just to that point, from, from what I understood from the presentation and sort of council's questions, my suggestion as you move this ordinance is if you want to make that change to the 15-foot livable space, that you move the ordinance as read, but with a change to condition 6A of Exhibit B, to add the following language at the end, provided that setbacks may be reduced to 15 feet for livable space.
I wasn't gonna say all that, but I was just gonna say with the changed condition.
Yeah, I just want to make it.
As, as stated by Brett Wallace.
Want me to start over, or?
You're in the middle of your motion, but I, you know, if you want.
I don't know where I was at.
Then I would start over.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.225.2 with the proposed change to a condition 6A as stated by City Attorney Brett Wallace.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right. James, you gonna handle L6?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So as I promised, this presentation should go by a little faster. This is a zone change also within the post-ranch planned area development to R3 multifamily residential. Again, the PAD had existed as a 647-acre area. The request, now that it had, you know, most of it has gone to R2, there were 53 acres designated for multifamily. What this request will do is it will amend the remaining 22.05 acres that was entitled for high-density residential, and place it into the R3 zone district. There actually would be a reduction in density. The current PAD allows that area to have a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre, and it would revert to, if the R3 is approved, to 12 dwelling units per acre within that area. And there would be a remnant of two commercial areas on the corner, they would still stay as part of the post-ranch PAD. The R3 zone primarily is to accommodate multifamily structures. Usually that would be triplexes and greater. So you could have, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, traditional apartment styles, et cetera. And it would be subject to the standards that you see there on the top part of the screen. Staff and with Planning Commission's agreement, there are two recommended conditions. One is that any multifamily development structure greater than one story or taller than 20 feet would have to have a 50-foot setback from area shared with the single-family designated use. And also a landscape setback of at least 20 feet shall be provided next to property designated for single-family. When reviewing zone changes, it has to be subject to compliance with the general plan. And as I mentioned in the last presentation, this is within the neighborhoods category. R3 is listed as an appropriate zone district. And density greater than 4.5 dwelling units per acre is allowed on sites up to 25 acres in size. The three criteria that have to be addressed is specifically, number one, the action is consistent with the city's general plan. So one of the goals is to encourage variety in neighborhood design. And staff and Planning Commission did feel that multifamily zoning is ideal at this location, given its proximity to Florence Boulevard, State Route 287, and it will serve as a good, good transition between the single-family use to the south and the highway on the north. One of the applicable elements that we look at is the fact that the multifamily community will offer a housing option for those not seeking traditional single-family homes. When we look at the guiding principles within the general plan, number eight indicates that we should link all land use decisions to known available water resources to ensure long-term viability and environmental sustainability for all new growth and development. Since this multifamily area does have certificates of assured water supply, it would allow fee simple condominiums or townhomes to be constructed. And so there is an opportunity to develop this area for condominiums or townhomes as opposed to rented or leased development. And staff would encourage the applicant to consider that, because it would utilize the certificates of assured water supply, and it would help direct growth in the spirit intended by the general plan. Another criteria that we look at is rezoning conforms to the general plan if it proposes land uses within the range of identified uses of the general plan. Basically, this area would allow multifamily development up to a density of 12 dwelling units per acre. The proposed zone change is considered necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. This does help meet, meet the need for multifamily housing. At its November 3 meeting, Planning Commission did accept staff's recommendation to approve this zone change, and they moved to forward to City Council a recommendation to approve this zone change request to R3, subject to the conditions of record that I've briefly mentioned in this presentation and found within the staff report and ordinance. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
I mean, it gives the, gives the applicant the option to potentially condominiumize or townhouse, which would be also different for Casa Grande, since, so, we have one development, I think, that's not been used as a condominium project. But anyway, I think that's kind of market-driven, so. Seeing no comments from, from the council, I'll open the floor. This is a public hearing, so this is a public hearing for item L6. If there's anyone here. All right, seeing none, then I'll close the hearing, and we will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.225.3. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from post-ranch planned area development to multifamily residential on property located generally between Talteck Buttes and Overfield Roads, and adjacent to Florence Boulevard, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFar? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.225.3 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, let's move to the last item on our agenda, L7. This is a public hearing also for ordinance number 1178.157.5. James?
This also is dealing with an amendment to a PAD, but it's an amendment within a PAD itself, it's not going to an R2 or R3 zone. So the location is within the Casa Grande crossings planned area development. There's currently approximately a 12-acre area that is designated as office retail. And the proposal is to amend this parcel to allow multifamily use. Part of the amendment would also relabel or reclassify the parcel, so that the areas identified in blue would be able to be used as standalone parcels for wellsite uses, which Arizona Water Company has plans to operate wellsites upon. In October, Planning Commission did consider a major site plan for this site for a 270-unit apartment complex, and they did approve the site plan subject to City Council's approval of the PAD amendment. And I provided an excerpt of this site plan so that you could see what's proposed. Eight three-story buildings that are 40 feet in height are to be situated on this lot. Out of the 270 units, actually the majority are two-bedroom, but followed by 121-bedroom units, as well as 21 three-bedroom units. When looking at amendments to PADs, it's subject to meeting the criteria on the screen and discussed in greater detail in your staff report. I want to specifically talk about a couple of these items. The first is relationship to the plan to conditions both on and off the property. So should this site be amended to allow multifamily development? It's well situated based on what's surrounding it. Commercial is designated on the property to the north, as well as office uses to the south. The area to the west is the most sensitive, it's designated for single-family development. But when looking at the fact that Camino Marcato provides 84 feet in right-of-way, and there's a combined nearly 40 feet of landscaping on both sides of the road, based on the imposed development standards, there's. based on the imposed development standards, uh, there's also forty-four feet in combined building setbacks, which results in over a hundred-and-forty feet of minimum building separation. So, uh, staff as well as planning commission was comfortable with the amendment considering this, um, separation distance. Also, there's a planned linear trail along the eastern edge of the Casa Grande Crossings PAD with a planned linkage from the apartment complex to this eventual regional trail. So that furthers, um, really good design in terms of, of connecting this plan with, uh, a future condition off the property. With regard to conformance to the city's general plan, this sits within the commerce and business category. Commerce and business does allow multifamily development up to a density of forty-five dwelling units per acre. The proposed density on this site would be about twenty-two dwelling units per acre. And staff and planning commission felt that multifamily development is a good transitional land use between Interstate ten, which exists to the east, and the planned single-family neighborhood to the west. And I should, should clarify, since we're on the topic of certificates of assured water supply, that single-family area does have certificates, so it is likely to, um, develop for single-family on the west side of Camino Mercado. With regard to conformance to zoning, the applicant is asking for some deviations to the PAD residential design standards for multifamily development. The requirement is to provide a fifteen-foot buffer along, um, all of the perimeter of the site. And you can see the areas identified in red, they're proposing a seven-foot buffer as opposed to fifteen. Staff and planning commission were comfortable with this, um, proposed deviation for a couple of reasons. If you notice, the other parts of the perimeter well exceed fifteen feet. So there's kind of a balance there going on. And in the specific areas where it's only seven is due to some factors that really, um, won't cause a, um, result of a, of a, of a harsh impact on the surrounding properties. To the south is the wellsite access road, so that buffer really isn't, um, serving to, uh, protect the site from another use or vice versa. And then the planned hotel site towards the northeast corner, um, is programmed with its own buffering. So with this seven feet coupled with the buffering on the hotel site, staff and planning commission felt there was adequate, uh, buffer. With regard to pedestrian and vehicular ingress and egress, as I mentioned, there is a planned, um, trail along the east side of the development. And, um, part of the entitlement process, there will be a dedication of, of the easternmost thirty-three feet of this property for the trail. And then the trail construction would be performed by the city. But they are planning a connection as indicated by that yellow arrow on the right. And then, um, from Camino Mercado, their primary access is denoted by those two yellow arrows. There will be emergency access between this site and the hotel site, um, as indicated by the red arrow. At its October sixth, uh, meeting, planning commission did accept staff's recommendation and moved at a motion of six to zero to forward to city council, a recommendation to approve this amendment to the PAD, subject to, uh, one condition and that has to deal with the, um, planned trail in lieu of right-of-way dedication as currently required by the Casa Grande Crossings PAD. The existing thirty-three-foot roadway easement for Cox Road shall be used for public trail purposes. And that concludes the presentation.
Questions from council? Okay, all right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here would like to speak on item L7? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number one, one, seven, eight, point, one, five, seven, point, five. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to Casa Grande Crossing's planned area development, adopted for property generally located at the southwest corner of Florence Boulevard and Interstate ten, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number one, one, seven, eight, point, one, five, seven, point, five as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Haddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lavender.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, that concludes most of tonight's business. What's left is our reports. Bob, you wanna go first?
Just a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. That's all.
Mr. Lavender?
I attended the Florence Street, uh, traffic study session last week and look forward to seeing and working with them on, on some of the input they received. Moving forward also, on January twelfth is gonna be the Unity March. We approve some street closers tonight. The theme will be the beloved community and something we're adding this year and working with a, a committee is the Day of Service on January sixteenth. That morning, we're looking at starting with a rally in the morning, uh, doing some community, uh, enhancements. I think graffiti, possible some trash pickup and then having a lunch that afternoon and more. I'll have more information, but for those that are interested, the day of the service will be the morning of January sixteenth. And I'm hoping that the city will really be pushing the firework standards as we get close to the January first, Mr. Rains, and making sure that we get the word out there. But also echo Bob's comments, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy Hanukkah. Started last night.
Yes, sir.
Matt?
With that leading, thank you, Mayor. Had the honor of lighting the Shemash candle, which is the helper candle, in the middle of the menorah last night. So we had a great group of people here, um, lit the menorah, um, and it was a lot of fun. I learned a lot about, about the traditions and, uh, they had food and games. So it was a good time.
And they gave you a menorah, too.
And I got a menorah to take home, yeah. So, um, but the, the Shabbat of Casa Grande is the one that puts that on and they did a great job and it's gonna get bigger every year. It's a great, uh, cultural and amenity for our community, so it's a lot of fun to see. And speaking of that, the Christmas and holiday decorations in here, Gloria, and around the city hall, thank you. And to Danny and his crew, the park looks fantastic. I liked the tree there, that's where it was when I was growing up, actually. And so people know the reason we don't have it here anymore is cause we got new sidewalks and it was really hard on our sidewalks to get the equipment up there. So the lights look great, they made it through the storm and the three-foot water, so fantastic. Your first, your first light parade was a challenge for you, sir, so it's all downhill from here, I think. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I got to ring the bell for the Salvation Army and it's a great way to see our community and how much people care. And the neatest thing, I've said it before, is that a lot of the parents give the money to their kids to put into the bucket, so they're instilling those values, uh, generationally. So it's a lot of fun and, you know, from every quarter penny to dollar, twenty-dollar bill, it all helps and it's a great organization, so I just love seeing our community, uh, participate like that. So with that, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Merry Christmas, Happy New Year and anything else? Happy holidays, thanks.
Just happy.
Happy.
Be happy. Let me just start off, uh, condolences to, uh, council, uh, Councilman Edwards' family for their loss. And I also just wanna publicly, um, reach out and, and from Casa Grande, the many residents, to Mark Lamb, Sheriff Lamb, uh, and his family for the loss of their son and granddaughter, uh, a few days ago. Uh, on a lighter note, hats off to the fire department. They did a great event, uh, at Station five-oh-one, had Santa there all morning and it was just as, there was a line all morning long, so that was great. Public Safety Foundation Dinner was Friday night. As always, they do a great, uh, great service. I wanna diddle on what Matt said. Danny, the Community Services Department went all out this year and I think this weekend you finished, uh, coming up on all the activities. There were so many activities, it's like I couldn't get to all of them. But, uh, seeing people in the park at night, taking their pictures and things like that, it was just, it was really a, a great time for them, so thank you. And I know it took a lot from other departments to help put the decorations up, uh, and things like that, so thank you. I rang the bell too and tomorrow morning for the Salvation Army, um, I have twelve volunteers going and we're gonna be packing up the toys and getting them ready to go out to the kids, so Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Donna. Um, just a big shout-out to a couple ribbon cuttings we did this past week. Mission Heights has an expansion on their school. They're gonna add another, uh, ability to handle another hundred students. So, and it is an A-plus school in Casa Grande, so congratulations to them. And then, uh, we also did the ribbon cutting at the new Scooters Coffee Drive-Thru. So, uh, had one of their iced caramel coffees, it was really good, so. And then, uh, just, just a reminder, keep an eye out for the new website, the city's website, probably around the first week or so, February, second week, uh, keep an eye out for that. And if you haven't opted into the city's, uh, site to get notifications, please do so. Then you'll, then you'll know when the new website's on. There's a, also a new app that's gonna be called Civic Ready that will allow us to push messages out to all of our, uh, citizens. So a good way to keep up on what's going on with the city. You have to opt in though, you have to ask and give permission for us to send you these notifications, but it can be sent either text or email or even a phone call. So, um, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna kind of pick up on that communication ability and make sure we get everybody, um, communicated to. That's probably about all I've got, it's probably enough and, uh, pretty good evening tonight. But I wanna thank everybody for being here. Again, I'll echo everybody else's sentiments, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year. We'll see you next year.